Okay, thank you very much. First, I just want to make sure Karen, are you okay and you're ready?
Yes.
I guess, just taking a look to make sure you're all right. Are you okay and you're ready? All right, thanks. I see you now. Okay, thank you. Okay. Again, I'll repeat first, all right, well, welcome to this hearing and meeting of the Landmark Land Use Committee for Committee Board Two. First, we will do the hearing, the public hearing for 55 Prospect Street, and then we will go into the regular meeting part. Again, while people will be presenting, first, I want to hear the presenters for 55 Prospect Street. And then, after the hearing is closed, we'll then start the meeting. Board members and committee members will be able to ask questions of the presenters of 55 Prospect Street when the, in the meeting, meeting part of the meeting. Hopefully, it's not too confusing, but I thank everyone for that. Okay, let's start the hearing at 6:05 PM. For the public hearing for 55 Prospect Street, it's, we have to read off these things. BSA 2022-10BZ, CEQR 22BSA 021K. Try to summarize this as much as we can. It's a permit 573-19 for the, which is bounded at, well, it's a permit for conversion use, for use group three, for a school, it'll be a schoolish type place on the ground floor and cellar at 55 Prospect Street with existing building. Now, it's contrary to the zoning resolution 547-1D. You know, this will be with a, and it is also with an additional M1-6, you know, we'll be trying to do that, set that aside as well. It'll be, it's currently in a Mike manufacturing zone. And this will, and it's a block 63, yeah, 63, 63 lot one. This will change, this is going to change the, I guess, you know, what designation of this property will be for the purpose of opening up this schooling, I guess, as one educational facility. The education is an educational facility. That's, well, it's, it's over by Prospect Street, by Adams Street on the west and Pearl Street on the east. The applicant is RFR/K 55 Prospect Owners LLC. And it's a, they're looking to do this, and it'll be at behalf of the tenant, Vivy, Vivy. Thank you, you have to forget my pronunciation. This is an early childhood education project, which will open up, which they already have three schools in Manhattan already, so they have, they have experience. And the scope of the project is for renovating this particular property. So it'll be, it's 7,007 square feet on the ground floor and 20, 2,025 square feet in the cellar. Let's see, what else we have here? And it'll be, it'll allow changes to allow this particular property, you know, thing for the schooling to be, and there'll be enlargements to allow the work, this to be presented for this educational project. All right. So the first presenter for 55 Prospect Street, please go ahead.
Good evening.
I hope I did, if there's anything I may have messed up, please correct me.
No, you summed it, you took all my speech. You summed it up very well. My name is John Highland. I'm the attorney for the applicant. The applicant is RFRK 55 Prospect Owner LLC, acting on behalf of the tenant, Vivy. Now, Vivy is an established early childhood education preschool provider with three other approved locations in New York City. They operate schools in Manhattan at 55 Hudson Yards, 50 Park Place, and 75 Barack Street. It works, Vivy works with employers of all sizes to make exceptional care and learning more accessible and affordable by working with employers to sponsor tuition. The applicant provides childcare and early childcare learning programs for children aged six months to five years of age. Vivy has been actively seeking sites in Brooklyn that will allow for enrollment expansion, and it diligently sought and assessed the viability of several other sites prior to choosing 55 Prospect. These other sites did not satisfy due to space or layout needs or cost was economically unfeasible. So they have chosen 55 Prospect and are making this application now. As stated, the proposed project involves the interior renovation of a portion of the ground floor and cellar floor. This is the cellar. And this is the ground floor. And it will occupy 9,100 square feet comprised of 7,075 square feet on the ground floor and 2,025 square feet of the cellar. Project will not enlarge the building's envelope or infect the, or affect the exterior of the property, and there will be no structural changes to the building. The standard operating hours will be from Monday through Friday from 7:00 to, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and they anticipate a range of 80 to 100 children to receive care on a daily basis. The teachers and staff will be CPR and first aid certified. And there is, it also adheres to a comprehensive health and safety plan that outlines its processes and contingencies. The applicant and Vivy would be served by a separate and dedicated main entrance on Prospect Street, as well as an additional entrance for staff on Pearl Street, which could also serve as egress. The area immediately surrounding the premises consists of commercial, residential, and mixed-use commercial and residential and community facility uses. There are other educational facilities in the proximate area, and the BSA approved a similar special permit for a charter school at 77 Sand Street. New York courts have held that regularly held that educational institutions are presumed to have a beneficial effect on the communities in which they locate. And the proposed operation would qualify as a school under the section of the Health Code. A comprehensive noise and air quality report has been done by Philip Hubeven Associates and submitted with the application. And the proposed special permit would enable the applicant to renovate and reposition the space in the premises as a use group three school. We are confident that this application satisfies the findings enumerated under zoning regulations, Section 7319 and 7303. Moreover, New York State law case law strongly supports the granting of this special permit considering the favorable status accorded to educational uses. So accordingly, it will be respectfully requested that the application be granted. I have on Charles Vanello, who is the CEO of Vivy, I believe he is on, and he might want to say a few words. Charles?
Thank you so much, John, and thank you, everybody, for the time. Actually, joining me is our co-founder and COO, Ben Newton, who's going to introduce himself, and then I'll, I'll go ahead. So Ben, do you want to take it away right here?
Hi, everyone. My name is Ben Newton, co-founder and CEO of Vivy. I've spent my career launching and building schools for the last decade in particular in New York City. First with a group called Avenues, and then for the past six years, focused exclusively on early childhood. First, supporting family childcare, it's home-based programs, and then most recently with Vivy. In our work to support families throughout the childcare crisis, a big part of our design and our work is to design schools that accommodate working families today. You heard a little bit about that. We serve children as young as six weeks, we're open 60 hours a week, 250 days a year, and we work with employers to subsidize care for their people. So really are grateful for the opportunity to serve working parents in your community. Happy to answer any questions about our program and how we design to serve families, but grateful for the opportunity to speak to you today. Charlie, I'll head it back to you.
Thank you so much, Ben, and hi, everybody. My name is Charles Vanello. I'm the co-founder, CEO, and first dad of Vivy. My two-year-old Grace has been attending our program since she was three months old, and that wasn't enough for me, so I went and had twins about six, six months ago. So I'm not just the first dad, I guess, I'm also one of our largest customers, so to speak. In any case, Ben said a lot of the important things here, but we are so grateful for the opportunity to speak to you and eager to serve the community. At the heart of everything that Vivy does is our mission to make exceptional care and learning accessible and affordable to working families. And we do that with a lot of heart and a lot of love, and I think there's three things that I'd love to be able to hit on and leave you with today. The first is, again, that mission is to make exceptional care accessible and affordable. The second is to really be aligned with what families need today. And for many families, that means hours and coverage that aligns with their needs, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 250 days a year. And of course, in beautiful spaces. You can see on our website and in the plans presented, how much love has gone into this to making it a home for families, to really feel confident in bringing their children, to support the broader and frankly increasingly growing community of young families, and finally, to do so with the best teachers around and to honor them for who they are. So all of our teachers are full-time employees who are salaried with college degrees, benefits, and we give them all ownership in Vivy. And so this is really a community effort to make sure that it's our teachers who are also being supported as they grow and support our young children. Like Ben said, we're delighted for the opportunity to present to you, eager to serve your families, and excited to answer any questions we might have.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much. If there's nothing further from your presenters, I will now open this part of the hearing to members of the public who may have any comments or questions. Again, our committee members and board members, including myself, will have to restrain ourselves until we finish the public hearing and slide into the meeting. Are there any comments or questions from the public on 55 Prospect Street? So I'll give it a moment. And there seems to be no further, no, I don't say further, but there are no members of the public that wish to speak on this matter. So at this time at 6:17 PM. Yes, well, hold on.
District office here. Hi, Mr. Vanello. Nice to see you in this context. Very happy to share that the office received no comments of opposition. We did receive one note of support that they wished to be read into the record. Suzanne Quint of the Dumbo Action Committee says, "As a resident of the neighborhood, I am supportive of this proposal. I have spoken with some fellow residents who have raised the question and asked that the tenant, early childhood education provider Vivy, be signed on to participate in the 3K and pre-K for all services. This would be of importance and value in serving the community." Signed, Suzanne Quint of the Brooklyn Action Committee. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Let's make a note of it for myself. Thank you. If there are no other further points or any comments or questions from the public. Working at 6:18 PM, we'll now close the hearing regarding 55, the application for 55 Prospect Street. And now we will slide in at 6:18 PM into the meeting portion of the, of for the Landmark Land Use Committee for Community Board Two. Again, thank you for coming. Thank you for all our participants, and especially committee members and board members. Again, we'll introduce Daughtry Castoffin and Irene Jena. I don't know if Irene's there. I can't tell, but I see Daughtry. All right. Okay, I hear you. Thank you. Okay, our co-chairs. And especially thank you to Karen Johnson, who's taking our minutes tonight. And if Ms. Johnson needs any, you know, Karen, just let us know if you need any moments or anything or clarifications from any of the presenters or anybody else who's spoken. All right, thank you for that. First, we'll ask for a approval of the agenda. If there is no objection to the, I will ask that the agenda be granted, at least the agenda be approved. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. If there are no, if there are no, no one objects, we'll adopt the agenda as given. Thank you. Again, we'll present our people. That is Daughtry and Irene and myself. I'm Carl from Gordon. I'm trying to keep this thing going, and Karen Johnson's our secretary. Thank you very much. And also, now move over to the, this is, we're in March, so I'll ask for the February approval for the February minutes. If there is no objection, I like to have the minutes taken by Brian Howland. Thank you very much, Brian. I like to have those minutes adopted as approved. So okay, thank you very much. Having no objections, the minutes have been adopted, and thank you very much. All right, now we'll go into the discussions for 55 Prospect Street. Actually, I guess, what I'm going to do first is just jump over to Karen Johnson, if she wishes, unless, since this is in Dumbo and it's in her backyard. Karen, do you wish to, do you have anything you wish to present, add, question on 55 Prospect Street?
No, it seems like a good use for the space, so all for it. Thank you.
Okay, that was, that was great. Any other questions or comments from committee members or board members?
Yes, Irene here.
Irene.
Hi. I remember when we reviewed the Sand Street Charter School thing. There was a lot of concern about air pollution and noise from traffic, given the location. Is there any remediation being done here to protect these premises from the same hazards?
Yes, it's, it's my understanding that as far as the noise, they're, they're undergoing measures now to make sure that the attenuation is under control. They're going to adequately attenuate the windows of the premises and bring those levels, make sure the levels are, noise levels are within acceptable ranges. They also, the environmentalist report recommended measures that could be done regarding the air quality testing from time to time and taking indoor air samples to make sure that they're within the proper ranges. They're also planning to work with the Department of Transportation to propose high-visibility crosswalks at the intersection of York and Pearl. So it will be easier with the foot traffic, with the parents and guardians bringing the children to the, to the premises.
Thank you. Any other?
I have a question. It's my understanding that Article 40, whatever it is, the Health Code requires access to an exterior space. Can you talk a little bit about how the school might access exterior play space and where that might be?
I believe the architect is on the line, Carol Gretter. Carol, are you there?
I am, but I think, Ben, you might be the better person to answer this.
Hey, that's right. Hey, how's it going? We've identified a couple of different areas, and frankly, we're still identifying a few of those areas per Article 47. Not too many folks know about that. Thank you. We're going to actually take kids as far, as far, I guess, west of the water, and then there are a few, I'm kind of turned around a little bit, but there are a few parks basically east that we can access. What we basically use as a measurement to determine outdoor spaces is as much as a 10 or 15-minute walk and then per our, per our engagement work and our approval with the Department of Health, what we'll do is, you know, we oftentimes take kids on walks, but we look for areas that are within a four-block radius. We've already gotten pre-approval from the Department of Health, and they've approved our park access. That doesn't mean that we're licensed. We still have to go through that process, but they've approved the nature by which we are going to be accessing parks nearby.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thanks, Daughtry.
Do you folks qualify for the school crossing guards, I guess, program? Maybe, maybe not. I, I can't, I, it just happened when I was in Lower Manhattan, I came across one walking through, and I was pleasantly surprised. I don't know if you guys, but as a private institution, I don't know if you would qualify or not.
That's actually a really good question. We haven't, we haven't explored that directly with our sites to date, because they haven't been in areas where we've needed it. But if it's certainly an area of concern for the community board, it's one that we can explore in one day.
Okay.
One of the, one of the things that is true about our program is that parents and sometimes ancillary caretakers are bringing children directly to the classrooms for pickup and drop-off. And so, you know, are usually taking extra care on the walk to and from school.
Thank you. And any other questions or comments from committee or board members?
My hand is raised.
Okay, John Do, it's both to approve. Do we have a second?
No, I didn't move to approve yet, although I am.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Do.
First of all, what was the, I didn't hear if you said what was the prior use of that facility? That's the first question. And then the second question, Mr. Gordon and committee, is that the city in a lawsuit settlement is required to replace most of the sidewalk ADA access ramps. And I'm hearing that a portion of those ramps will be replaced in conjunction with building projects. So we need to get a handle on that. The project is a DOT project, so it doesn't come directly to this committee. But this committee would have to support the project because the buildings don't go to the department, don't go to our transportation committee. So we need to find out more about it, because I heard the developer mention something about the crosswalks. And this is an ideal opportunity for us to get a handle on that piece of it.
If I may, just quickly, Mr. Do, this isn't, if I'm right, this is an existing building, and the proposal is to consider the use of the existing space. It's not a new construction.
I know. That's why I said, what was there before? I was, I was asking what was there prior to?
I believe the most recent occupant was a yoga studio. And prior, prior to that, in years past, there was dry cleaning and printing.
And, and the basement space that you indicated, is that also a space that will be occupied by children? Or is that a separate, is that a separate use?
I can jump in on that. Good evening, Mr. Do. The basement space will primarily be used for staff ancillary services, so it's where adult restrooms will be, our staff room will be. But then we also have a room carved out for actually school-age drop-in care. One of the ways that we serve working families in the community is that when their normal childcare falls through, they can actually use our space as emergency childcare, and we're going to look for approval from the Department of Health to have one space downstairs allocated for children ages five years old and above. But it, it won't be a functioning every day as a classroom space. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Esther Blunt, yeah, I see Esther Blunt and Phil Phil Finoi have their hands raised. I'll go to Esther Blunt, coming in order. I see it first.
Hi. Hello. I just was curious about what, what, I know you stated many times that it's affordable, but I want to know what is affordable, if you could give me like a a roundabout figure, like if I had a, you say you take kids as young as six weeks. You know, what would I be expected to pay? Then the other question is, how old, you go, you go as young as six weeks to how old and do you have after-school programs for children that go to school but may need to come there after school until their parents come home from work?
Hi, Ms. Lann. I can, I can take it from here. Thank you so much for your question and for, and for your interest. On the ages front, we start at six weeks old and we go until five years old for regular full-time care. As Ben mentioned, one of the things that we are looking at is school-age care, but because our programs are 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and based on the regulations, we can't co-mingle age groups, so children under one have to remain with children under one, children between the ages of one and two have to remain with those children, and children ages two to five have to remain with each other. In the, there may be an opportunity to consider after-school care in that space that my colleague Ben mentioned earlier. But again, that's, that's part of the discussion. So I don't want to, you know, give the wrong information, but I, or, you know, be too broad on it, but that's, that's how the space is structured to work. And then on the tuition front, it depends on, on a couple of things, namely, the schedule that families choose and their age groups. The youngest children are often the most expensive only because the ratios are the hot, are the, I guess, they're the lowest at that age group. And then we have a number of vehicles to support families in terms of cost. One of them is employer sponsorship, where, you know, one of the clients that we work with right now is New York Presbyterian Hospital, and they subsidize, I believe, 50 to 75% of care for their employees when they work with us. Another is we work with a number of schools who subsidize care for their teachers. The second mechanism is financial aid, and we work with community partners and individual families to support them on that. Again, there's just so many ranges that that go into this, but I think you should find us comparable with, you know, options in the neighborhood that offer similar similar levels of care from an hours perspective.
Okay, thank you. Bill, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just curious. Actually, I like what I see so far. I'm just curious about the ratio you were talking about as far as a number of children to staff, and how many staff do you expect to have the facility? And also, what's the number of, the maximum number of children that you can actually handle?
And do you want to talk about the ratios by age groups? And then Carol, you can talk about the total occupancy or unless you want to handle that.
Sure. Thank you, Bill, so much. That means a lot to us. In terms of ratios, so I just, you know, ratios are all regulated by the Department of Health. It's basically two teachers per age group at a minimum. And way that boils down is two teachers per eight children and the infants, two teachers per 10 children and the toddlers, and then they can go to two teachers from anywhere from 15 to 20, from 12 to 20, depending on whether they're two, three, or four years old. With that said, there's a difference between providing care and providing an early childhood education. So throughout the majority of our day, we make sure to have three teachers in our classrooms to support the daily functioning. And so you would expect for a school that may range from, Carol, correct me if I'm wrong, 80 to 100 children, depending on the mix of kids at different age groups. We would have, call it 25 to 30 full-time staff in the school.
That's exactly right.
And how many, how many children do you think you can handle at the location?
Go ahead, Carol.
Up to, up to 100.
And what's the admission for this?
I'm sorry, Mr. Phil Finoi, I didn't, I didn't catch that. Can you repeat that one more time?
Oh, yes. What is the procedure?
Oh, yes. What is the procedure to be admitted to this? Yes.
A wonderful, wonderful. Thank, thank you very much. So because there's no school year for children ages six weeks to, to five years old, we're open year-round. And so it really is a rolling admissions process. Families apply when they need care. They pay on a month-to-month basis rather than having to do big chunks upfront or throughout the year. And it's that kind of a rolling commitment. And so typically, a family will, will attend an open house or inquire. They'll apply. They'll do an interview to understand if it's right for them. And if there's space for them, we'll accept them. Ben, did I miss anything on that front?
No, not at all. You know, we will work very closely with employers in the area who we hope to subsidize tuition for their people who come to the community for work every day or who live in the community. And that's one way that we'll, we'll, you know, in a specific way funnel families into the school.
And, and to be absolutely clear on this, this isn't a pressure cooker nursery university type situation where families are coming in and being observed with, you know, other students and having to do algebra tests for a two-year-old. This is, this is about getting to know each other and making sure that they're comfortable bringing their child to baby every day because they're gonna be spending up to twelve hours a day with us.
And last question, what's gonna be your catchment area as far as individuals who can actually come here? Is it just downtown Brooklyn? Is it the district? Okay, so all Brooklyn?
It's a very good question. Carol, do you have, Carol or John, do you have any, any insights on the, on the, the rate? Historically, it's been mostly folks within, call it a ten or fifteen block radius. Although because we, there are so many people that work there, we have some families that commute over an hour to bring their child into baby with them. But Carol, I don't know if there, if that's a specific term of art, or John, if that's a term of art that, that we've outlined.
As far as I know, no. I mean, I don't think there's any restrictions or anything like that as far as the, you know, who, who can go there in terms of geography.
Agreed. There's no, not to our knowledge either. I think it's Mark and more casual question.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious. For instance, I lived in Brooklyn, but work in Manhattan. I just drive, stop by and drop my child off and then go to, to work in Manhattan.
Yes.
And that's what, that's what many families do already.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Are there any?
Yes.
Or any other?
Irene.
Yes, Irene.
You mentioned prior use of the building included printing and dry cleaning. Those both create very toxic substances. How are you mitigating or cleaning up the building from prior uses?
To our knowledge, those uses haven't been in the building for a while and this building underwent a major renovation not all that long ago. The previous tenants in the space that we're asking for special permit for were a yoga studio, yoga studio and a boxing studio.
Right. The printing and the dry cleaning was many, many years ago. It was just brought out in the, in the history when they, when they, when they did the report.
Carlton, I'd like to make a motion.
We do.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, that's Daughtry. Okay. Are there any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none. Let's see. Taya or Karen, do you want to take the role?
Sure. Karen, you got it? Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, because sorry, there's noise in the background. All right, Mr. Gordon. Carlton. Yes, sorry, sorry. Daughtry. Yes. Irene.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yvette?
Yes.
Judy? Judy? Sorry. I, I see you saying yes. Ernest, no. It's been no. Me, Karen, yes. I think that's it. Motion pass. We, we have Ms., Ms. Ali. Oh, yes. She's on. Sorry, sorry. That's okay. Ms. Ginsberg?
Yes.
And yourself, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. That's twelve, four, zero against. Zero abstain.
Hey, thank you very much. Motion pass.
Very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Prospects are approved. Next one is, now we're going over to the Brooklyn Navy Yard at sixty-three Flushing Avenue. There's a lot on this, well, a lot of description on this one. I tried to break it down to some, I guess, less, a little bit less. But if there's information that I leave out in my summary, please step right in. Again, this is at sixty-three Flushing Avenue inside the Brooklyn Navy Yard. And this is a, by a moge, okay, I can't really think of new. It's a moge. It's, it's the, will be, I guess, giving the application. It's an application for a clean energy group that's willing to take over, I guess, to do work on the property at this, at building, I think seventy-four inside the Brooklyn Navy Yard. It's work that's going to be done for a energy, it's an energy group and, you know, it's clean energy group. And what they're wanting to do is to build a wall that's going to be fire, it will be fire resistant. It will follow the standards set by the Fire Department of New York and, and, and the NFPA as well. And it's going to be, there will be storage of chemicals as part of the energy project. It'll be given, the project will be overseen by people who are graduates of MIT, Massachusetts into the technology. And I think, I'm trying to think of any other major, it's going to be a new, a, like I said, it'll be this, it'll be a large wall which will be protecting, I guess, will, for protecting inside. There'll be an expansion that's inside the Brooklyn Navy Yard. And it'll be eighty, ADA accessible as well from street level. And let's see, what else do we have here? It'll be also applications being made pursuant to the, prior to the nineteen sixty-eight building code. And let's, yes, basically added under use group seventeen. But there'll be no changes that otherwise that are made to, is be, you know, to the structure. Otherwise, there'll be no increase in the floor area or the building height. They have, again, left out certain things, but please go, you know, please add to it and go ahead, present yourselves for the Brooklyn Navy Yard project at sixty-three Flushing Avenue.
Thank you, Chair Jordan, members of the committee, district staff. My name is Bryce Beckwith. I'm a senior project manager from DBI Projects, project management firm here in New York City, leading the efforts on these alterations on Amagi's behalf. I am joined today by my colleague Jared Vask, Assistant Project Manager at DBI, as well as the CEO of Amagi, Sung-hun Woo, as well as the Director of Operations, Gerald Guzman, and the architect who is assisting with this project, Obi Alaki. We, I'm going to share my screen. And the subject of today's presentation to Chair Gordon's introduction is the exterior renovations and improvements that we will be making to the building. And so with that, I will dive right in. We're presenting today by referral from the Public Design Commission, who has given us preliminary approval for this project. Further to the introduction, again, given by Chair Gordon, this project is critically important as a non-production R and D testing facility for Amagi's clean tech energy products. It's allowing for the creation of up to sixty additional high-paying jobs here in New York City and allowing Amagi to contribute towards the Brooklyn Navy Yard's mission of becoming a centerpiece for technological innovation and advancement. So as ultimately contributing towards New York State's net zero and carbon neutral goals. The location of Building Seventy-four, which is the subject of the alterations, is inset to the Brooklyn Navy Yards, which is not accessible to the public. It is accessible via a few checkpoints that require all pedestrians and/or vehicular traffic to enter the yard. There's a map showing the exact location of Building Seventy-four. You can zoom in to get a little bit better imagery here. It's located, Building Seventy-four is a roughly six, sorry, roughly four thousand square foot building with a roughly thirteen hundred square foot rear yard that is currently enclosed by a chain link fence. It's located on the corner of Chauncey Avenue as well as Perry Avenue. Moving on to the subject of the improvements to the exterior of the building. So the northeast elevation, which you're viewing here, is currently a patchwork of various different brick infills as well as the, the historical brick from the building. I will note that this is not a individual landmark. It is a contributing building to the Brooklyn Navy Yard's historic district, which is on the National Registry of Historic Places. And so as a part of our renovations, we'll be making some improvements to all exterior facades of the building as well as, as, as a part of the introduction, the creation of a opaque wall that will be in capturing the backyard space in lieu of the existing chain link fence. This is a view that we're looking at currently of the northwest facade. The front of the building faces northwest. You'll see the existing storefront that was put in by the previous owner. That it will be the subject of renovations that we'll be making to the exterior of the facade as well as the second floor existing finestration that will be replaced with louvers, which you'll see in, in the forthcoming slides here. Continuing to the north, sorry, continuing to the southwest facade of the building, you'll see that there is kind of the existing scars of, of previous patchwork. There is existing piping, gas piping for, for the existing utilities within the building that's located on the side of the building, of which we won't be touching. But there will be some, some minimal brick, brick improvement, repointing and repair work as needed throughout the project. Tuning on to the southwest, sorry, southeast facade of the building, again, similar patchwork. You'll see in the backyard, there's similar patchwork that exists that will be repairing, that will be making minor adjustments to as needed. But it won't be a full facade renovation. Rather, this, this particular facade will be at least on the first floor covered by, and then captured by the, the wall that will be surrounding the building. All right, just to talk a little bit about the scope of our exterior renovations again in terms of plan drawings. So the, the scope of our renovations will include the removals of existing finestration located at all facades on the ground floor as well as the second floor. At the ground floor, again, we will be removing and enhancing the storefronts that are located at the front of the building. We'll be removing and replacing the existing, the existing door entrance as well as the auxiliary door that allows entrance into the space. We'll be removing existing windows and replacing select windows with new windows on the first floor. And then in the backyard, we'll be replacing the windows with brick infill in order to comply with fire-rated, fire rating requirements, given the, the subject of, of storage in the backyard. Moving on to the proposed plans, this is a proposed plan that gives the, gives a general understanding of the wall and the perimeter location of the wall that we'll be constructing in, in order to encapsulate the backyard. The wall will maintain two points of entry. One, that's going to be located to the northeast, which will be, which will allow vehicular and, you know, forklifts and, and heavy equipment access to the backyard. And then one that's going to be located to the northeast facade of, or northeast portion of the wall, which will be a auxiliary pedestrian form of egress. Moving up to the second floor of the building, as mentioned earlier, the existing finestration will be removed from the second floor, similar to the first floor. At the second floor, the difference is that the existing finestration will be replaced with, entirely with mechanical louvers as this floor will be a accessory space, functioning as purely a mechanical floor for air handlers. The, the product of that is that obviously the, the exterior work will require installation of, of new louvers in lieu of those windows. And just to clarify, on, on the second floor, facing the backyard, we will actually be infilling those windows with new brick in order to comply with NFPA and FDNY regulation of, of creating a continuous to our fire-rated enclosure around the, the subject of the stored materials in the backyard. Moving on, we see demolition plans for the, the northeast and northwest facades, followed by new elevations for the proposed improvements to these facades. As mentioned, at the existing storefront entry, we'll be replacing it and upgrading it with new storefronts. Single pane glazing as well as a new garage door for the sake of operability and, and egress into the space and out of the space from, from heavy equipment such as forklifts. We will be providing a new ADA accessible door entry and replacing the auxiliary door with a permanently fixed window and replacing that auxiliary door with a door that is a little bit further away to the right of the facade here with a new, a new door that will allow for a second means egress. On the second floor, you'll see that the louvers are depicted as a vertical finestration, which will be installed on the second floor surrounding the building on the northeast and northwest facade. And then at the ground floor of the northeast facade, we will be putting in new windows, new operable windows to replace the existing non-functioning operable windows. You'll also see on the northeast elevation, a depiction of the new wall, which is a split face CMU to our fire-rated wall along with the access gate previously mentioned. Lastly, you'll see on this elevation and throughout the, the elevations and renders to follow, there is periodic light fixtures in order to allow for visibility at all times of day and night surrounding the building. Here you'll see southwest and southeast demolition drawings depicting the scope of removals of existing finestration. With the only kind of particular item of note being that the only area in which we are creating a, a new kind of larger opening is actually at the attic level right above the second floor in which we are expanding the existing exhaust. in which we are expanding the existing exhaust louvers and creating a wider, a wider louver. Moving forward, this is the proposed elevations for that southeast, southwest elevation. Again, replacing that smaller louver with a larger louver, adding the periodic light fixtures that'll allow for visibility at all hours. And then on the back facade, do putting in brick, infilling the existing location of windows with new, new brick infill to allow for a continuous to our fire rated. Here is a render of the existing conditions at the front of the building, which is the northeast, sorry, northwest. And a render of the proposed conditions. To note on this, on this slide, the, the color of the finessration that we will be putting in inclusive of the louvers, as well as the new storefronts, doors and windows is to be color matched to the, the brick of the existing facade in order to provide, in order to, to complement the existing fabric of, of that brick that's in place. On the left, you'll see a proposed view. On the right, you'll, sorry, on the left, you'll see an existing view. On the right, you'll see a proposed view of, of the northeast facade. And again, you'll see on the left, an existing view and on the right, a proposed view of the northwest facade and main, main entrance, which is behind this car. Again, you'll see to the left, a existing view and to the right, a proposed view of the southwest facade, inclusive of a, the two hour fire rated wall that will replace the chain link fence. As mentioned earlier, the two hour fire rated wall is a split face CMU wall that will be color matched to the existing brick, complimenting the texture of the existing building. And the specific louvers that will be used throughout the second floor finessration will be a vertical louver that will again be color matched to the existing brick fabric. And that color is proposed to be a canyon red and, and to be verified in field with, with, with color samples. Lastly, the canyon red color, as mentioned, will also be applied to the existing eve to, to, to replace the existing paint that is currently black and, and disrepair in, in matching that to the, the, the new finessration elements that are going in. Lastly, the fixture that we are, that we are going to be installing at the backyard and side yard, sorry, building, building elevations to the northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest will be a fixture, a linear fixture, linear fluorescent fixture that will, will provide ample light for the backyard. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to see, even though these are not, the building is not a landmark building, but I see a place to see that the attempts have been made to try to retain the, some of the historic style and fabric of the, of the building, especially as here in Brooklyn Navy, which is full of history. Okay, I see questions first. I'm going to go to Bill Fanoi comes up first on my screen.
Hey, thank you, Chair Gordon. Yeah, questions I have really quick. You said there's going to be retail space in the ground floors, could be ADA accessible, correct?
Apologies for the confusion. Thanks for the question, Mr. Floroy. There is no, there's no retail space at the ground floor of the building, but it will be ADA accessible.
Yeah, because you mentioned storefronts, so I was kind of curious about that.
Yeah, apologies for, for that confusion. The, this storefront, I, I should rather say it's merely a storefront glazing system. While there's no retail or any sort of commerce that's happening within the building, it is a storefront glazing system that we will be maintaining and, and replacing.
The second floor, what is it going to be used for? Because I'm kind of curious if the first floor is ADA, would the second floor be ADA?
The second floor is accessory and it is purely to house mechanical units. And, and thus the, the code does not require it to be ADA accessible. The first floor will be fully ADA accessible for employees. And the second floor will not be ADA accessible in accordance with its use.
Yeah, I just want to make sure of that. Okay. And finally, the height of the wall, the new wall that you're putting around the outside, what is that height?
The height of the wall set at eight feet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill. The next person I see on my screen is John Do.
Mr. Do, you're muted.
You mentioned something about a two-hour rating on the wall. Can you speak to what exactly is going to be produced? The chemicals, are they flammable? Are they noxious? What is the purpose of this facility?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Do, for the question. The, the purpose of the facility is for the creation of fuel cells, which will power larger industrial transportation vehicles, such as, as larger, you know, eighteen wheeler trucks, as well as ships and, and what have you, and potentially planes. And so with that, you know, there, there will be chemicals that are going to be stored in the backyard that are hazardous. And as such, we are working closely with the, the fire department to receive the proper approvals and a prop, you know, the proper, you know, requirements that, that they have for us in order to allow for those chemicals to be stored. And then one of those requirements is for that wall to be a two-hour fire rated wall, which is, which is to your point, exactly what we're installing.
And so ju- just to build on that, well, how do you dispose of whatever effluences remaining from the production?
Yeah, maybe I will actually, I'll, I'll actually pitch it to, to Sung Hoon, the CEO. And if you could just maybe speak to, to the sanitation of, of, you know, any sort of offsets, that'd be great.
So thank you very much. And first of all, thank you very much to the community for this opportunity to speak for the company and also for your support here. And thank you, Mr. Do, for your question as well. So just to introduce the company briefly for like five seconds. What this company does is we are a sustainability technology company, basically making the sustainable clean energy solutions for heavy transportation, such as trucks and ships and airplanes. I believe everyone is by, I mean, everyone is familiar with the lithium battery technology, for example, where batteries being used for consumer cars like Tesla vehicles, for example. However, battery has a fundamental difficulties, I mean, problems with the size and the volume. So for large transportations, which are maybe more important for our daily lives, like trucks and ships cannot use battery fundamentally, but we need a solution, given the amount of the greenhouse gases and pollutions coming out of those large transportations. So what this company does is making new type of the battery, which is using chemical as the fuel, chemical which is ammonia. So going back to your original question, so in that facility, we are basically making our own chemical battery, which is using the ammonia as the fuel. So given the existing regulations around the chemical itself, we have to build the wall with two hours rating. And the energy which we are generating is going to be electricity, electron, is going back to grid and going back to the source of the, the, the source of the, the energy. So we are not really making the, any high products like noxious or toxic high products out of this chemical pattern that we are building, if that, if that, yeah, answers your question.
Thank you for that. Are, is your facility hooked up to the Con Ed grid? Or do you get a supply elsewhere?
It is not. It will be, it'll be connected to the Cogen facility located within the Brooklyn Navy Yard.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Next person I see on my screen is Miss Ali.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I was just curious about why you've chosen to change the color of the window and make it match the brick and let it not look like a window.
Yeah, I, I, you know, just, just quickly on that front, thank you so much for your question, Ali. Miss Ali, I, the, the color of the window, as well as the color of the louvers, has been selected to match the brick in effort to not call much attention to it. And, and that's simply kind of the, the, the reasoning behind that color selection.
I'm, I'm not sure, I'm having a window would call attention to it. I think it kind of looks like you're trying to block all the window. Was there any specific manufacturer and reason for it to not serve as a window? Perhaps you needed to not have a window there?
Sorry, Miss Lee, I don't know if I understand your question. Are you talking about a specific area in which we are knocking out a window or not putting a window?
No, the way you have turned the, the color of the window to brown. I'm not sure how you're achieving that. Are you putting glass and staining it brown?
The, thank you. Now I understand, Miss Ali, the, the, the glass is actually transparent. It is only the frame that surrounds the glazing, which will be matte, which will be that, that canyon red color. So it'll be like the molions.
Oh, because then you're rendering it look almost as if you, could you put back up that rendering? It looks almost as if you have blotted out the window and put something else. So it is a window, but just the, the frame is, so I guess your, your rendering is not very clear.
Yeah, so.
It didn't look like glass there. It looked like you've blocked the windows out.
Yeah, apologies for that. And I understand the confusion. The, the window frame that I am mentioning, which will be the same color of the brick, is what you see, you know, surrounding this open space. What you see here is actually the interior of the space beyond. That is basically this brick, this looking pattern. And so it's, it's transparent, you're seeing into the space.
Yeah, but I was referring to the ones on top that looks like no window.
Correct. And so, yes, to your point there, that is, those are not being replaced by windows. You are correct. We are removing all windows from the second floor, using those existing openings in order to put mechanical louvers for intake and exhaust of, 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 of air that's required by, by our, by our air handlers. And as such, that space is not an occupiable space. It's a service space.
So it won't be windows anymore. They're just exhaust exits.
Correct.
Okay. Could you have not used some of them as windows instead of blocking out the whole row of it?
For.
This is seven, seven windows you've blocked out.
Yeah, yeah, great question. And in accordance with what code requires for the amount of air intake and exhaust that is required in order properly ventilate the space for health and safety, we need to use all of these windows in order to allow for, for the proper volume of, of air flow throughout the space.
And you couldn't exhaust through the roof because it just makes the building look totally different, like boarded up almost.
Yeah, and I assure you, it, it won't look boarded up. And I think there, you know, unfortunately, this is a, kind of a, a illustration, but the, the louvers will, will look like mechanical louvers that you might see on any given building. But to the, your point about, you know, question about exhausting through the roof, unfortunately, the, the, you know, the requirements of, of the landlord, as well as the, the kind of conditions of the structure of the space, don't allow for us to create, you know, the amount of penetrations that we would need through the roof in order to get the volume of air that's needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person I see on my screen is Daughtry.
Thank you. I applaud what you are doing here. And I'm very hopeful when I see presentations like this. But that said, I am very confused about how to comment on this. It's, you know, it's, you mentioned that it's in front of the PDC, the Public Design Commission, but it's not a civic structure. It's not accessible to the public. It's a private manufacturing facility that appears to me to be a little bit, to be, being shoehorned into a building that is historic and you're maintaining some of the history of the building, but you're totally, you know, if we were looking at this from a landmarks perspective, we would, I would totally tell you absolutely not because you're completely destroying the appearance of the historic building. In addition, you're, you're increasing the square footage of the first floor with that big wall, which is eight feet tall, masonry, and it just changes everything. So I'm very confused about what's being asked of us here for all of those reasons.
Thank you, Ms. Crestarfin, and appreciate your, your, your considerations and, and the feedback. And, and, you know, what you said is accurate and that this is a private kind of non-civic project. You know, I think the, the procedurally, it's my understanding that, that the Public Design Commission allows for the Community Board Two, which is assigned to the Brooklyn Navy Yard District or, or surrounding area to, to, you know, basically have visibility into the projects that are being approved by the Public Design Commission. And so my understanding is that this is a, a presentation of, of what, what is being provided and, and, and allowed for by the Public Design Commission and a Q and A as such.
Thank you for that.
Hey, thank you. Next, I see Yvette Richardson. Yvette?
Hi, thank you, Chair. Um, my question is that I thought in the presentation, I heard that, um, this was a research facility, but it's sounding more like a manufacturing facility. So I just wanted to understand what's really going on in the, in the side of facility. And I have a couple of other questions as well, but if you could address that, I appreciate it.
Sure, a hundred percent. Thanks, Ms. Richardson. The, the facility is being used strictly for, for, for what is, is, what is coined as non-production, research and development. And so there is no commercial production of any, any energy products that are being made here. It is merely being used as a, you know, as, as a lab of sorts in order to provide a space for research experimentation and testing of the products that would then be produced elsewhere.
I see. So that maybe only some like prototypes or something will be developed at the site?
Precisely.
Okay. And then I wanted to understand, did you, or does, does your client have a, a plan for job creation and for utilization of, of neighborhood workforce?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm going to pitch it to Sung Hoon. I think he can answer that best.
First of all, thank you very much for the questions. The company is working better with the EST Empire State of Development. So we applied for the Empire State of Development Accessure Jobs Program. So we were selected as part of the program and the company is expecting to hire roughly seven, sixty-seven people for this new site, which we, which is started happening. And also in, in terms of the job creation, company started from basically about an year ago. It was just myself, single person, but now we have forty people sitting in the office in the company, where a majority of the people are living in this community, Brooklyn Navy, Navy and Bollum Hill, Clinton Hill, which they are all happy about, about the community, which I really want to appreciate everyone here in this call. So yeah, there is the expectation and actually company is, is planning to exceed the, the job creation number that we promised to SD.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is that is the facility going to be operating twenty-four, seven, one shift, two shifts? So what's the deal with that?
No, during the normal hours only from the morning to the evening. Yep, not overnight. No, during the normal hours only from the morning to the evening. Yep, not overnight.
Okay, thank you. That's that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, that. I see Bill Flannoy has another, wants another bite of the apple. Okay, Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, by all means, thank you. Appreciate that. Chair Gordon, okay, I'm curious a couple of things. I just I noticed after some other people talked. Okay, you have the louvers on the second floor for ventilation, for air ventilation. And it seems it's a substantial amount of ventilation that you need. And also, this is a research for liquid batteries, okay, for large vehicles. I'm curious about what materials you're going to be using to make these batteries as first research. Are we talking heavy metals? Are we talking, for instance, cadmium, lithium, phosphate? What are we talking about here as far as the chemicals you're going to be using for this, the actual development for these prototypes? Give me a cobalt.
Yeah, sure. Thank you very much for the question, first. So as for the material itself, I mean, you can think of it as a kind of the engine, but the different shape of the engine. So material itself, we are just using stainless steel, pretty typical material is being which is being used for different types of the engines right now. And as for the material going inside such an engine, we use some metallic materials, including titanium and also platinum. And titanium and platinum are platinum group materials like the gold, so which is not harmful for, I mean, environment or to people. So those are basically how, I mean, the the pretty much all materials which is going into the system. But at the same time, we are using chemical, which is ammonia as a fuel, which is going to be present, going to be present on premise. Yeah, daily basis.
And case you?
A casing itself is, we are using the same material, which is which is stainless steel. So stainless steel is majority of the of the majority components going into this system.
Okay, so the ventilation is for what purpose?
So ventilation, basically, we are making the kind of the engine, which is generating the energy. And also, we are storing the chemical. For the safety, safe handling of the chemical, the facility has to be equipped with enough ventilation. So in the in the event of the accident, in the event of the any kind of the the events that could happen in the facility, the ventilation basically provides enough, I mean, the air from the outside, so that it 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 can exhaust the air from the inside of the building, if this makes sense.
Staff for, can we ask to make sure I get this, make sure I understand this clearly? The ventilation is only for emergency situations and not for everyday use?
Ventilation itself for the everyday use. First of all, sorry for the confusion. So yeah, for running such an engine that we are generating and the testing and also product typing, we will keep running the ventilation to keep the temperature of the facility within the facility to be constant. And that is going to be running while we are using the facility and running the testing.
Okay, so it's for cooling purposes, not for ventilation of chemicals?
Yeah, mainly for the cooling purposes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I see John Do.
Yes, um, just one follow-up question in regards to security for this facility, because it sounds like it's a pretty specific and potentially dangerous kind of facility. What type of security, if any, in addition to the general Navy Yard security, will this facility require?
Yeah, great question, Mr. Do. You know, we're going to have access control and there's going to be a twenty-four hour security facility manager who will be who will be surveying the the property. And the access control will be a encrypted system that that's going to be run by by AMG.
And so it it'll be an in-person at the facility twenty-four seven? Is that, am I?
Yes.
That is correct.
That is correct. Twenty-four seven, yeah, security is going to be provided.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I see Miss Ali.
Yeah, I'm initially, I was ready to to ask for a motion to approve. But now with hearing about these chemicals, I'm starting to get nervous. What kind of protection, like OSHA protection you have for employees? Regarding the the various types of chemicals that you'll be using and is there is anything in there explosive that could blow up and create a problem for the neighborhood? If you had an accident, what's the worst case kind of accident you could have?
Yeah, Sun Hun, do you want to maybe speak to some of the OSHA precautions that are taken as well as a lot of the provisions that are in place vis-à-vis your your safety department and your safety manager?
Sure, sure. First of all, thank you, Miss Ali, for the question. So we are storing two big chemicals. One is the ammonia and the other is the hydrogen. Hydrogen is, of course, a flammable material. Therefore, requires many safety features, safety measures to safely store the material. And first of all, those these two chemicals have been used extensively in the industry. Therefore, there are very well-developed protocols and safety systems for those chemicals, which we are implementing to this new building as well as the existing buildings within the new lab. So the company has OSHA-trained the safety manager as an employee, and she is overseeing all the safety programs of the of the stories and handling and also disposal of all the chemicals and gases within the company, which is being very well-developed. And also, we have, we recently had an audit from the outside, the the company with which we successfully completed without any issues there. So to summarize, the program that we are implementing in the new premise, which is Building Seventy-Four, is going to be the same. So we are working together with the the gas, I mean, chemical company, that may be the most prestigious gas and chemical company, Air Liquid, to implement the safety system together with the gas and chemical stories. And also, as I said, all these OSHA compliance will be met, and also we are implementing safety protocols and systems.
And just as, just to to build on that, and as a reminder, you know, we are working with FDNY as we speak to to meet the compliance of the regulations that they require per, you know, baseline code as well as working with them to allow for, you know, for excess storage of chemicals if and as needed. And and that is kind of a whole process that we're going through with them in order to meet NFPA code as well as local code regulations. And that's separate from kind of the operational precautions that are being taken by AMG or to meet any sort of OSHA requirements and additional safety measures that are implemented by their company.
So is there specific protections for the employees? Do they have to like suit up in some special clothes or anything?
So of course, we wear the PPE, physical protection equipments, like the glasses and also the coat. But it's not intense, it's not intensive ones where you can find from like, for example, semiconductor, it's not like that. Yeah, typical, I mean, the eyeglasses and also the lab coat that is required. And if you are handling the gases, you have to wear the gloves. And yeah, those are, yeah, well-developed and implemented in the company operation day-to-day basis.
Chair Gordon, like to make a motion?
Please do.
Yeah, based on all the comments that I just heard and the safety protocols that are put in place and the fact that the FDNA and NPFA are both, you know, on top of this, and they look like they've taken care of all all safety protocols. I'm going to make a motion to approve as presented.
I'd like to second.
Second after all. Okay, so we have a motion to approve and a second. Are there any questions or comments from committee members and board members on the motion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Gordon. If if you look at the background, I am looking at the Brooklyn Navy Yard as we talk. Do I need to put on a hazmat suit going forward?
Not at all. Probably, I I want to make one comment here. If you look at the Brooklyn Navy Yard area, you'll see the heavy transportation, like trucks and ships coming in and out every day basis, which is making, I mean, large pollution in the community. So what this company is building is really the solution to enable the sustainable trucking and sustainable shipping, so that you don't have to get to see all these pollutions coming out of the larger vehicles. So yeah, that's what I wanted to share as a last comment. And thank you again for all your comments and 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 looking forward to expanding our presence in this community.
I I think this is a good thing because you want renewable energy. This looks like it's going down that path.
Thank you. If there are no further comments or questions.
Miss Stanton has her hand raised.
Oh, I didn't see that. Go ahead, Stan.
Carlton, I just wanted, is it absolutely certain that the Public Design Commission needs a recommendation from the community board? Is this more of a courtesy?
It used to be. No, last take, I'll have to toss that to Taya Mueller.
Yeah, yes, that's correct. I promise we would not have asked you to sit through all of this highly technical detail unless it was required. Thank you.
Good to me.
Ready for roll call?
No. I'm ready.
Okay, Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Abstain.
Abstain. Irene? Irene?
Yes.
Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Miss Ali?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
John?
I approve with a hazmat suit.
Bill?
Of course, yes.
Of course. Yvette?
Yes.
Judy? I think that was a yes, right? Um, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And that is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Yes, one abstention, zero negative.
Hey, you got it. Just take, just be careful and take care of us.
Absolutely. Thank you guys very much. We appreciate your consideration and all of your care and and great questions today.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to go, well, we're on, next on the agenda is the landmarks. I just realized I did not ask, and I should have asked, for any comments before we head into the landmarks. Any public, non-committee, non-board members? Are there any comments from any of the public on, I guess, the the items that are coming up either in the LPC, for Landmark Preservation Commission? Certificates of appropriateness. All right, hearing none, I guess we'll start off with the LPC certificates of appropriateness. The first one is one-one-three St. James Place in the Clinton Hill Historic District. Any applications to extend a four-story, in existing townhouse with a two-story rear addition? Yes, and and which is partially visible from Green Avenue. I just should make note before we continuing, we have received favorable comments in writing for the board, which was usually sent to the board, although it was addressed partly to me from the Citizens for Responsible Neighborhood Planning of Clinton Hill slash Fort Greene, from the Society of Clinton Hill and the Fort Greene Association. All three groups have sent letters giving their approval for the work. I guess their biggest concern was the, make sure that what the work that's being done be consistent and that any, you know, inappropriate, and they felt that the work would be good for the community. But yes, that's just the, given the opinions of the three groups. And now we'll proceed to the presentation of one-one-three St. James Place.
Thank you, Carlton. Hi, good evening. I'm Adrian Colvin, and I'm here with my colleagues Jess Hinshaw and Andrea Fisk. We're from Shapeless Studio, an architecture and interior design firm. Tonight, we're presenting our proposal for a renovation to a townhouse at one-thirteen St. James Place. As you know, St. James Place is within the historic district of Clinton Hill. These are photographs of the townhouse's front facade in the nineteen-sixties in the present day. Although we're doing some minimal cosmetic work on the street side, this is being reviewed by the Landmarks Preservation Committee Commission, sorry. Our presentation this evening will simply cover the more substantial work at the rear, where we're adding a two-story addition. This photograph shows the rear facade of one-thirteen St. James Place as it currently stands. The chimney you see here is not original, and we're proposing to remove it. In these photographs, you can see the neighbors on both sides already have additions. At one-fifteen St. James Place on the left, the addition is two stories, partial width and quite deep. At one-eleven St. James Place on the right, the addition is one story, full width and shallower. As you'll see in the coming slides, our objective was to negotiate between these two existing conditions while also adhering to various code requirements. This drawing shows the rear facades of one-fifteen, one-thirteen, and one-eleven St. James Place at present. In this elevation, we're indicating our proposed extension. It is two stories tall, made of dark brick with black metal railings. We'll show you in the upcoming images that the left portion is of a comparable depth to the addition at one-fifteen on the left, and the right proportion portion is of a comparable depth to the addition at one-eleven on the right. One thing we wanted to share with you is that we recently modified this this addition after speaking with Rosaria Sinisi, who liaises with various community groups. At the left-hand side, where our addition extends the furthest, the facade was originally not quite symmetrical. The dimension of the brick on either side was slightly different. Rosaria mentioned this was something that the community groups had questioned and asked if we were open to making an adjustment. We have revisited this design and have now updated the drawing to show the brick piers on either side of equal width, one foot two inches. This drawing is a cross-section of the existing townhouse. Here, you can see the cross-section of our proposal. As we mentioned earlier, one side of the extension is shallower while the other extends further. This negotiation between the existing additions at one-eleven and one-fifteen St. James is illustrated in this diagram, where you can see more clearly how the L shape of our proposed, see the L shape of our proposed addition. Some aspects of the shape were prescribed to us by various building codes. In this axonometric drawing from our DOB filing, we indicate some of these codes. For instance, the deck is set back thirty feet from the rear lot line, as this is as far back as we were allowed to build. The court at level one is designed to meet the minimum requirements of two hundred square feet with no dimension smaller than ten feet. This diagram indicates all of the existing rowhouse extensions on our project's block. There are seventy-two existing rowhouses, and thirty-six of them, or fifty percent, already have additions. Of these thirty-six, twenty-one of the additions have two stories like ours. In this axonometric rendering, you can again see how our proposal relates to our neighbors, this time in three dimensions. Similarly, this view is a perspective of the proposal and our neighbors from the back of the rear yard. One thing we would like to point out to you is that technically, our proposed extension will be partially visible from Green Avenue. But you'd need to have extremely sharp eyes in order to see it. These two photographs are in winter when there are no leaves on the trees. At the left is the existing view. On the right, on the right, we have included a rendering of our proposal. In this, in the yellow circle, which is an enlarged view, the addition is not particularly apparent. When the foliage returns, we believe the extension will be essentially imperceptible from the street. Finally, here are existing and proposed plans of our project with the addition again highlighted in pink. Please let us know if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from board members, committee members?
Can you take down the?
Hmm? Which who?
No, I I wanted him to take down.
Okay, Miss Ali.
Okay. Yeah, is is there a reason you were using black as opposed to some different material closer to the color of the building?
Uh, I think this was a choice we made along with our clients, but I should say that it's not something we're we're fully wedded to and we'd be willing to make a change if necessary. One thing we did notice was that when you use darker brick, the the build, the extension kind of disappeared a bit more from Green Avenue. And so using a darker brick was a way to kind of make it go away from a from a distance.
Okay.
I have a question.
Well, I see Daughtry next.
Thank you. Um, would you mind putting the, um, rendering of, the straight-on rendering, 3D rendering of the back up again, please? Um, I just, while you're doing that, had a question. I understand, um, actually the one, yes. So I understand that you had, I think from all, perhaps all three neighborhood groups who wrote a letter in support, you had some negotiating that had, you did on the, the deepest section of the extension, which is on the left here, and so that's nice and symmetrical. But if I'm reading the, the recessed, um, piece right in front of the court correctly, that is asymmetrical. Was that intentional?
Uh, so are you talking about the portion on the right-hand side?
Yes, exactly.
Yes, it is, it is asymmetrical, and that is relating to what is going on, on the inside. The other, the other thing was that it's essentially, it's essentially sort of, it's glass, and it's sort of meant to, uh, to disappear a little bit. Um, it's sort of an inside-outside thing. Maybe Jess or Andrea, would you like to comment on this, my colleagues?
Yeah, absolutely. I think we were reading the elevations in two different planes, so the elevation that projects forward, we, we liked that idea of symmetry. On the right, um, this does serve as a good place, it has lots of functional region, reasons. It has, um, upper storage on the inside, but also it allows for a sconce and exterior light. Um, so I guess because they're on two different planes, we're not reading the symmetry in the same, uh, way.
Okay, my only observation about that is that, um, with the exception of the, the bulk of the, your neighbor's addition being asymmetrical, I'm reading everything else as pretty much being symmetrical in this area. It's not a criticism, it's just an observation.
No, I, I think that's valid. I mean, I guess one thing about this corner is that in elevation, this proportion isn't completely symmetrical, but if you look at it from forty-five degrees towards the corner, there is a kind of symmetry to it. It's sort of unfolded, an unfolded symmetry, but I, uh, I think your comment is valid. I think, um, that makes sense.
Are you seeing, are you seeing it from Green Avenue in that cutaway portion or from the other side?
So from Green Avenue, you are seeing it from this side here. So you can very faintly see it here, but it's extremely difficult to see. But you see, you see a bit of the inside of this corner, basically.
No, I, I think the way it's cut away, it probably reduces the, um, the image of it from.
Right.
Green Avenue.
Right.
You could take it down.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from committee members, board members?
My hand is up.
Uh, oh, yes, go ahead, Miss Stanton.
I'm sorry, I probably wasn't paying attention when you showed a, a rendering or an elevation of the existing right next to the proposed. Trying to understand how much this dark material might be coming out.
Sure, I can show you that again. Uh, if we go. So you can see here, this is, these are photographs of the existing rear facade. We're not even sure if the stucco was original. It probably isn't. Here is, here is, uh, here is the elevation. In our proposal, we're going to remove this chimney, which certainly is not, uh, existing. And then, our extension is the bottom two floors.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from board, committee members, board members?
I'd like to move a motion to approve. Second.
Okay, move to approve by Ms. Ellie, second by Daughtry Kostoff. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, Karen, give us, you know, whenever you're ready.
Sure, Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
You're on mute, Karen.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. Daughtry?
Yeah. You're on mute again. What's happening with your computer?
Yep, okay, she's okay now.
Got it. Irene?
Yes.
Uh, Brian?
Yes.
Hazra?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yvette?
Abstain.
Judy?
Yes.
Yeah. Elizabeth?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So that'll be another eleven zero one.
Okay, you got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next one, okay, thank you. Next one is, we're bumping over to Brooklyn Heights, uh, at one hundred Pierpont Street. Uh, and they're looking to do some reconfigurations at the street entrance. Uh, looking to do some work on lintels and transoms, and also work on resurfacing the existing brownstone, uh, at the, at the basement facade.
Yes.
One hundred Pineapple Street, but Pierpont Street, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, sure. Let me share my screen. All right, can everyone see this?
Yeah, it's come up. Thank you.
All right, good, all right. Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Andrew Alcevedo with, uh, the Brooklyn Studio, formerly known as CWB, uh, representing the owners of the building as a project manager. Uh, I'm here to represent, to present the reconfiguration of the street entrance, installation of a new pediment and transom, and the resurfacing of the existing brownstone at the basement facade level. Um, the site, one hundred Pierpont Street, is in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. Uh, landmark records show this is an Anglo-Italianite-style rowhouse built, uh, in the nineteen fifties. The site is on the south side of Pierpont Street between Henry and Clinton Street. A quick history, uh, on the building, uh, the original design included a stoop shown in the nineteen forties tax photo. It was removed when the Brooklyn Law School purchased the rowhouse and turned it into dorms during the late nineteen forties. The, the landmark designation photo shows the stoop removed circa nineteen forty, shortly after, um, the tax photo was taken. In twenty fourteen was the last major renovation done to the building, uh, which converted the rowhouse back to a single-family dwelling. No changes were done to the facade during that renovation. Move them to the next two slides. Uh, these next two slides, uh, show the current condition of the facade and areaway. The, the present condition represents the work done after the stoop was removed and has not changed since. Uh, new pediment and, uh, pilasters framing the entry to the basement. Uh, new brownstones there leading down to the areaway. Uh, a new window and matching panel that replaced the original rounded, uh, headed double-leaf wood doors that opened into the parlor floor. Um, on these next slides, I'll skip, uh, to the street elevation slides and drawings first. If we have any questions regarding our design decisions, I'll go back and reference these images later, just in the interest of serving time, um. On these next two slides, uh, we documented with photographs the existing building facades adjacent to our, uh, site, one hundred Pierpont Street. Right here, it's this one in the middle. Uh, the stitch foot, uh, street-level elevation really shows the lack of importance, uh, given to the entry after the stoop was removed, especially when you look at the two adjacent buildings next to it, and how, what they did to handle their stoop removal by raising their pediments. Uh, we now see the, both the existing and proposed street elevations side by side. And note in the existing elevation, you see how the entries inframament, uh, lacks presence from the street level. Uh, it still reads as it did in the eighteen sixties, a second entry as opposed to the main entry to the house. After ninety-eight and one oh two Pierpont had their stoops removed, they modified their entries accordingly by installing their pediments higher and well above, um, the street level. And you kind of see ours just sort of hidden and tucked currently in its current state. Next slide. On this slide, I have existing and proposed elevations drawn from the sidewalk, similar to the previous one. This one more describes the scope of work that's occurring here. Um, we're showing the removal of the existing fence around the planter and on the right side of the stair. And for the construction, we're installing three new planters on top of the, uh, party, uh, excuse me, the privacy wall on the right. And we're installing new iron fences, uh, around the existing planter and a pair of gates at the top of the stairs.
Existing is on the top, oh, what?
Sorry. Yes, it's the front street view.
Okay, existing's on the top and the, and the proposal, okay, of the previous slide.
Got it, yes.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, uh, this slide shows the demolition work from the areaway in the facade. Um, we're removing the existing lights. The electrical connections are to remain. Uh, we are stripping the existing brownstone stucco, stucco, excuse me, from the basement up to the underside of the parlor floor windows, right above, right about this line right here. Uh, we're removing the existing pediment and glasters currently inframing the, uh, entry door. We're also excavating a portion right here of the areaway. So it's leveled now to the existing, uh, landing of the building. Uh, this slide shows the proposed work for the areaway and facade, um, installing a new pediment, uh, pilasters and a mirrored transom around the existing entry. Um, we're also applying a new brownstone stucco finish that matches the existing brownstone tint above. In the next slide, you'll see, uh, you'll see the stippled pattern more, uh, clearly for the rustication down there. Um, we're also installing new storage containers for the trash and recycling, and installing three new metal planters atop the privacy wall. Uh, this slide describes our materials and shows a section profile of the brownstone facade at the garden level. The brownstone stucco finish on the pediment and glasters will match the existing brownstone tint found above. Uh, you get a better look at, you get a better look here at the sort of stippled, uh, tooth-chiselled edge stucco finish at the garden level that we want to propose. All new metal work will match the existing black paint found on the windows and iron grills, and hand-painted gold lettering over the mirrored glass transom for this portion. Um, on this slide, we show the, this slide shows the demolition and proposed plans for the areaway, similar notes to the elevation, but just from a plans view, um, removal of the existing metal fence. Uh, we'll be removing the existing areaway stairs and railing. We will not disturb the existing planter box or this retaining wall right here, so it's kind of ends right here, all our excavation work. Uh, we'll, we will be removing the existing stair and railings uh, that lead from the street to the basement. And in terms of the construction scope, we're installing a new wooden metal recycling trash containers at the bottom. Installing three new metal planters atop the privacy wall here. Uh, the work also includes new finishes for the enlarged areaway, including new large format bluestone paving, new brownstone stucco finish on the facade and retaining walls. Uh, the scope also includes installation for a new exterior stair leading to the basement. Um, the stair fits within the same width of the existing stair, but shifts two feet to the left. Uh, constructed of bluestone treads and risers, along with the installation of a gate, uh, atop the new stairs. Uh, this slide shows a detailed section at the front areaway beneath, beneath the existing, uh, parlor floor windows. We are installing a new brownstone sill. Uh, the new brownstone pediment will be mounted a foot and a half higher from its previous, uh, location, uh, to make up for the new height of the pediment. We are installing a mirrored glass transom. Uh, we are doing it simply to hide the fact that the door itself is undersized, and believe that, uh, this trip will fool the eye into registering the transom as a transom, but if, um, if during construction we discover that, uh, we can make it into a real transom window with clear glass, we will, uh, do that. Uh, the brownstone wall on the west side, right here with the planter just in above, will be filling that in to match the existing height currently right here, because it sort of steps, it steps down current, steps up, sorry. Currently, so we're just going to infill that and add the planters above. I'll quickly go through the building sections. We included them just to show them that there's no work taking place on the floors above the parlor. And then you see in the areaway sort of what happens when we shift the stairs, uh, two feet to the left, we get a little bit more area at the landing, so it doesn't feel so tight. Uh, in this rendering, I'm showing more of the front areaway from the street level, the installation of a new gate, fed, new gated fence at the top of the stairs with finials at each po- at each post, which sort of match the, the grill, uh, the iron grill work over the window. Um, you can see the extension of the retaining wall on the right more clearly. Uh, by lowering the areaway, we also hide from street level the recycling and trash containers too. Um, and I want to conclude by saying that, uh, by saying this rendering really shows how the new rustication and inframament around the entry reestablishes a hierarchy on this front facade. No longer does the facade look like an afterthought or a second entry. Uh, it now has a real presence from the street level. Um, uh, thank you for your time and your consideration. I'll welcome your questions.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, right, in this sentence in Brooklyn Heights, I usually turn either to Irene or Miss Stanton.
Uh, Carlton, I.
Thank you.
Our committee did review this, and we supported, um, in almost entirely. The only issue that we raised with, um, Andrew and Brendan Coburn was the, the treatment of the transom. We're hoping that we don't like the mirror. And we're hoping that when you do more, um, exploration behind the door opening, you'll find that you do not need the mirror treatment, and you can, um, revert to glass, because we think the mirror is a bit much, but. Apart from that.
Agree.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I had a question. Can I go?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I'm looking at the, the front of your building, and your window system seems different from the other houses next. Can you put it back up? You have, you have two arch windows and then you have a square window on the, on the parlor level. Were those, were those changes?
Sorry.
Yeah, were those changes made when the Brooklyn Law took over? Because you see, everybody else had rectangle.
No, these. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Alex, continue, I'm sorry.
They were always there because it seems odd that you have rectangle above. And then your neighbors have rectangle. Those arches are in the very highest floor, not as low down.
If you look at the tax, in the tax photos, as far as back as I can recall, they did have.
Yeah, I see it, I see. Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Eric Gordon, may I make a motion?
Yes, please do.
Okay, uh, based on the fact that Judy Stanton did make a, um, a consideration of the mirror slash glass, uh, it seemed like, uh, Andrew, you said you would accept that?
Yes, and with further investigation, all right, you prefer it to be transparent, but we, once we uncover and do some construction work, we might do it. The, the thought was also maybe antique, uh, mirrored glass treatment too, was another option we were throwing out there, but.
Or a stained window.
Uh, the, our neighboring, the neighboring, uh, building just has a wood transom.
Okay.
So that's how they treated theirs.
Okay, my motion is that you take in consideration, uh, Miss Stanton's, uh, suggestion.
Yes.
And I will approve the rest of the presentation as presented.
You have a secret?
I'll second that.
A second.
That's, uh, I heard Brian, but whoever, wherever you get Karen. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Uh, are there any further, any questions or comments on the motion? All right, hearing none, uh, whenever you're ready, Karen.
Uh, Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Irene?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Hazra?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yvette?
Yes.
Judy? Judy?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And myself, yes, that'll be 12-0-0.
Okay, you got it?
Thank you everyone.
Make a note here that it's a with suggestions from Brooklyn Heights Association. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is, now we're jumping into the Wallabout Historic District, I don't know if we've had before. 108 Vanderbilt Avenue. And it's a, they're looking to renovate and restore. What is it now, yes, of the street and alleyway facades, including installation of a rigid you know, insulation and a, whatever you call it, hand, I was trying to figure this one out, the hand, hand, oh, I'm not even going to try it.
Hardy board, it's called.
Okay, yes.
It's called hardy plank, it's.
All right, yes.
Right.
And they're going to replace windows with LPC approval. And wood, with a wood, 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 wood windows.
Wood windows.
And, yes, okay.
All right, so.
Okay, and they work on the stoop as well, metal work as well. Restoration of the entry door and portico. And let's, yes, and then the cornice as well, okay, we have a lot of work on this one. Go ahead.
Thank you very much and good evening to you all and thank you for your time for reviewing this modest project, I'm going to share my screen with you. Let's see, where is it? Here it is. Okay, so this project is in the Wallabout Historic District. And as you can see, the district is noted in this red polygon, the building falls square in the middle of the Wallabout District. The aerial view is here, the district is roughly this area here, this is the BQE. Actually, no, this is flushing, no, I did that, I'm sorry, that is the BQE and flushing is here, the Brooklyn Navy Yard is right here. This is the building as it currently appears. This is a plan of the building, this is the front facade, the street facade, these are the rear facades. I just wanted to show you, these were, this was an addition, a small addition added in 2012. And it currently does have this material, hardy plank, which is a fiber reinforced cement panel, and it looks like clabberds, wood clabberds, but it is a very durable, dimensionally stable material that doesn't suffer the, the movement that wood does, and it's a very durable material, so that's why we wanted to propose this for our front facade, seeing it's being consistent with the rest of the building, this is the building from the 1940s tax lot photo, and I want to zoom in here to show you a few things, there is an alleyway here. And this building, its neighbor, 106 Vanderbilt also had an alleyway, but it was infilled. This is a, an infill portion of it, this building also displays eight inch clabberds, wood clabberds, at this point in the history of the building, the clabberds have been removed. And what we see on the street facade is an asphalt shingle, which is not historically consistent. The next photo shows the building in the 1980s tax lot photo. And as you can see, the neighborhood has declined quite a bit, I do remember those days myself, I was in college. Subsequently to this picture being taken, I understand that the building was eventually abandoned. And it was empty for many, many years. This is an elevation of its current state, you'll notice that the cornice is partially there. Windows are not the same size as they were in the historic state. They were smaller, you'll also notice the middle window is slightly off center. The current cladding is vinyl siding, not a historic material, by stretch of the imagination. And what we're proposing is to bring it up to a higher state of restoration. We are proposing to restore the cornice, the cornice has these double brackets. We want to restore the entry to be consistent with the Italianate transition to Greek revival historic designation. The hardy plank would be a four inch exposure, which is what would be preferred by landmarks. I also want to call your attention the fact that we've centered the window in the middle on the upper floor to where it originally was. I have been in discussion with landmarks on a number of these issues, they've been very helpful and pushing us in the right direction, they have suggested that we enlarge the parlor floor windows, these two windows here to their historic, original rough opening, I'm going to go back to the tax lot photo, you can see that these parlor windows are quite high, upwards of six foot 10. In, and they're consistent with the windows in the neighboring building, so landmarks was very clear that they wanted us to do this. And we have decided that we will, this is not apparent in this rendering, so I'd like to you to understand that these windows would probably go to about here. This is going to require quite a bit of work on the interiors, which was unanticipated, needless to say, but the most important thing for us, of course, is to get approval. Then the portico, this was removed, I want to bring your attention to this portico. A very large Italianate portico, both of them, 106 and 108 were removed. And I'm going to zoom in to the brackets, you can see these, these historic decorative brackets are there, this was completely removed, to restore it to this level of detail would require quite a bit of structural work, and it's, at this point, it'd just be really unreasonable, it'd be very difficult to do without doing some major surgery on the building. So the best we can do is to surface apply a portico. And that would be here, we are going to restore the brackets, they will be a little bit longer, it might subsequent to communications with landmarks preservation, we're going to try to mimic as best we can the historic brackets, I'm going to show you some pictures of the existing cornice, which you can see was not in great shape, this is the vinyl siding. These are the, this is the cornice of the neighboring building at 106, and as you can see, we're going to be duplicating these in kind. The next slide shows some existing photos of the windows, these are aluminum extruded replacement windows, you can see that this middle window is off center, we're going to re-center it with this window, and this window is the parlor window, that, this one will be larger. This is the existing door, which of course is going to have glass side lights and a transom, the portico will go above here. This is unusual, this is the original door from the 106 Vanderbilt House. Of course, the portico has been removed, the stoop is not historic. We are going to restore the brownstone of this stoop. And additionally, we're going to put in historic cast iron balusters and new posts. This is a nonhistoric guardrail, this hollow metal door is going to be replaced with a gate the, which would be consistent with what we had before. These are some photographs of the side, this particular one shows in roughly eight inch exposure of the clabberds, which are in very, very poor shape. The clabberds on the front facade were removed entirely, and then they installed the asphalt shingle. And here are some samples of some of the entry porticos that show the Italianate and Greek revival historic buildings in this very small district. This is not historic, I should mention to you, but this one is, this is a Greek revival building. And our entry is going to be very similar to this. This is a neighboring building with a new post, and this is one that I have actually found at another project in the neighborhood in Fort Greene. And we're going to repurpose these and install them at 108 Vanderbilt with approval from landmarks. And here are some further examples of these types of buildings that we see in the Wallabout District. They are either Greek revival or Italianate. In my conversations with landmarks, the preservationist Leanne Pollock suggested to me that my building, 108 Vanderbilt, was a transitional Greek revival to Italianate. And that is the spirit with which we are trying to upgrade the building. One of the issues that landmarks had with our application was the installation of rigid insulation on the outside of the building. The reason for this is that there is not much insulation in these buildings, and we all know that we have to cut back on energy usage in, in these buildings. The rigid insulation will do that, it will save money for my clients for energy bills. And it will make the clabberd side of the, of the elevation of the facade proud by about an inch and a half from its current location in plane. And these are the drawings that we submitted to landmarks, this is the bracket under the portico. These are wall sections, the windows are going to be painted wood windows to mimic the existing historic windows, which were two over two. And that's the entry door with the portico, the, the stoop with the historic new post and balusters. And finally, the last thing we're going to be doing is to also handle the alleyway facade, as you can see, this building in three dimensions, you see the alley, you see the alleyway side. So that facade will have the historic seven inch clabberd exposure consistent with the treatment on the front, the front is four, landmark specifically said the more noble facade has the the tighter spacing. And just so you get a zoom in here, this is that alleyway, so you do perceive the building in three dimensions, and you do perceive that facade, so the goal is to have a unified vision of this building consistent with the, the landmarks requirements. And I will leave it at that. And let you ask your questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any comments or questions from committee members or board members?
I have one.
Go ahead and stand.
How much of this work is actually staff level approval and what, what requires the commissioners or is the answer about our agenda?
Very good question, Ms. Stanton, the staff level approval was not possible for the use of the hardy plank, although it, it has been used in the past, and it was approved in our extension in the back from 2012, but this was prior to the Wallabout District being a historic district. The, one of the key concerns for the project was restoring the original window openings, the original sizes of the windows, which we are proposing to do. Additionally, the addition of the, out, the rigid insulation on the outside and a rain screen is, is another issue that landmarks could not approve at staff level. Those are the two burning issues, they've wanted us also to bring more of the historic details, shall I put it, to put it more in a restorative direction as opposed to just a renovation type and upgrade. The insulation is vital in my estimation to make this building a viable building for the future, one of the things we've noticed in the exterior wall assembly is that they, it's a wood framed building, but they infill the area where the studs are with brick. This is not unusual, and I think it's a primitive way of giving thermal mass to the building, but also air sealing before there was insulation available. We, we have to do better, the building doesn't really perform very well, and we just have to just make it a better, better, firmly comfortable building.
I see, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second John Do.
Thank you. Move to approve and second it. Any comments or questions on the motion?
There's a lot of work being done on this. I really do appreciate it. Yes.
I, I have to agree, there is a lot of work here, it initially was just the front facade. I convinced my client, you really need to deal with the alleyway side, so you perceive the building as one unified whole. And with a unified treatment. These clients of mine are, they don't have the deepest pockets, but they, they do want to do the right thing, and I think we are, we found the right equilibrium between the needs for energy efficiency and restoration of historic features, so that this building will really be an asset to the Wallabout District, that's our goal.
Do you think they'll revisit this after a while to finish some of the things that you can't do right now?
I, I think that what we're proposing will be a good balance between a full restoration, which would be quite an extraordinarily expensive endeavor. And finding the right balance between that and, and just having unlimited funds. I think it's unlikely that they're going to do things that will alter our work, I think they will eventually, for example, redo the roof and put in more insulation in the roof cavity. We won't, for example, restore the historic shutters, I mean, that obviously is something that most buildings don't have these days. Would shutters are, they require a great deal of maintenance and we have air conditioning now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes, we're, I'm ready, Karen, are you ready?
I think Hasra had a question.
Oh, yeah, a question, okay, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to say congratulations on restoring that, that type of houses, some of the oldest houses in the Clinton Hill neighborhood, although you're saying well about, but the big general neighborhood, a lot of them burnt in the early days.
Yes.
And I really appreciate that you're doing what you're doing, and I really wish the owners could have applied for some type of federal grant to help them with that project, since it's a one family. Perhaps they could pursue that end, because I know there's federal grants available to people who are trying to do historic preservation for one family houses.
It's actually a two family.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, and the owner's mother lives upstairs. And so they do, they did manage to avail themselves to a, a pretty decent loan, my understanding is they got a good rate and they're able to take on a larger portion of the work with this loan, so that's good.
Okay, but I know a lot of them with that material were burnt in fires over the years.
Yes, this building was emptied for many, many years.
Right.
And the person who bought. And the person who bought the property in a very distressed state brought it up to a livable standard, then my clients bought it from that person and they've been slowly improving it. And I think at the when we're done with this, I think it will really be an asset to the Wallabout District. My hope is it would.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bringing bringing up the neighborhood.
Yes, yes.
Karen, are we ready? Yeah. Uh, Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
Irene?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Hazra?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yvette?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Elizabeth? Elizabeth? And myself.
Yes, she left.
Yeah, that's right. Eleven zero zero. This has been a very amenable meeting.
So far. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I have a couple of items on.
Thank you very much.
Cheers. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay if you wish. Chairs report. Couple of these items have come for work that council person Lincoln Wrestler has been doing. First one is on over at seventy five Pineapple Street. This is one of a number of buildings that's been bought by the Green Book Properties, uh, which is a equity firm. And I'm not reading good things about him, so it particularly at this at seventy five Pineapple Street. It's a twenty unit building and now suddenly seventeen of the units are empty. The three remaining tenants are have formed their own tenant association called the Green Book Tenant Coalition. And they are intending to stay and they're working with a council person Wrestler's office to, you know, retain, you know, what it feel is the place to live. Lincoln has also brought to our attention thirty five Dean Street. Now, some of you may have noticed or may have heard there was a fire over by Borum Place and Pacific, which is a well is or was a what were they say? It's a physical culture establishment. Uh, you know, a gym, a small kind of gymnasium thing. And some of you might have seen it on tele. I saw it on television that the there was a big, quite a big fire there. Apparently, the fire went all the way over to the Dean Street side. And not almost, I think nine families were living at thirty five Dean Street. And they have now are can't stay there now. Uh, and Lincoln Wrestler has pointed out that there is a GoFundMe page for those of you who do GoFundMe. So but it's a they that's also been has had an effect on those folks over there. We've been there for, I understand, a number of years. All right. Next will be next will be or any other, let's say for, let's say open, let's say open, but community forum or community. Are there any other non board or non committee members that have something that they wish to bring to our attention? Uh, since we don't have that, we'll go over to other business and John Do has other business.
Yes, well, Mr. Gordon, first of all, you can feel free to submit a donation to the GoFundMe on my name if you so choose to. The other thing is you mentioned Lincoln Wrestler. Lincoln has a proposal. I'm not quite sure where where it's at right now. Where he is recommending that parking not be required for buildings that are close to public transportation. I don't know what that means in terms of being close. I don't know how that's defined. But Lincoln needs to be invited to the community board to explain to us what exactly it is that he is proposing so that we can react to it. I I tend to think that we need to keep all of the parking in this community that we can get because we've eliminated so much that it's become a major problem in downtown Brooklyn and throughout the community. And anything that we can do to relieve parking, we've got no additional parking with all of these additional large luxury buildings that have been built. Some people are going to come with cars, period, into the story. So parking in downtown Brooklyn is impossible. And people are having to block park blocks away from where they live. And so we have to address this as a community board. Parking is a is 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 a transportation committee issue. But Lincoln is putting in something that's going to come to the community board at some level. So we need to invite him to come and speak with us so that he could understand the community board's perspective on that.
My understanding from what I I was reading some of his press releases and his the things that he's been posting on social media is that he would prefer that the parking requirements, which are required uh, under under our zoning resolutions, you know, parking normally is required for any new for new properties. However, his position is that the parking should, you know, be, I won't say eliminated, but certainly reduced in transfer, he feels are transit rich areas or friend rich spots. And that people going into these areas will be using transit more and not relying upon parking. I'm not here to speak for Mr. Wrestler. I think.
And I'm not asking.
We can certainly.
For himself.
Yeah. Okay, well, what we'll do is I'll put in a I'll send a, you know, we'll send another, I'll send a request through to to the board office requesting that he appears at a, well, either or, either at a or both the transportation committee and of course this committee as well. We'll put a request in. We have, I think we have a couple of requests with the bar president's office as well and see who responds.
Perhaps he could come to a general meeting where he could meet everybody and hear numerous opinions. Because there are a lot of.
Oh, well, put it, yeah, we'll put that request in as well. I see Daughtry has a.
Yeah, I'm not finished yet. I'm not finished yet. As a general comment, Mr. Gordon, this community board and all of the community boards in Brooklyn have been overlooked by certain city agencies. I'm going to speak specifically about Department of Transportation, but we don't know what else is happening. And we have to actually begin to assert ourselves. We are fifty volunteers. We don't come with the same baggage that other people come with. As imperfect as we are, we're as good as you're going to get. You got fifty people here who are voting on issues pertaining to the community. We cannot have city agencies taking uh, whatever they get from other people and making policy out of it. That has happened in community board too very badly over the last year. We have street closures and a whole host of things going on that this community board has not been involved in whatsoever. What's the purpose of a community board if they can only, if they only give us what they want us to have and everything that they want to do that they think the community board isn't going to side with them, they just ignore us. We have to understand that that's not right for the community. We are community board members. We have to speak for the community and it can't be selected. So you will, that's a seed to be planted. We have to do a better job of representing the community.
Thank you. I saw Daughtry. Because Duffin, Daughtry, did you still?
Uh, I just, I put it in the chat that income restricted housing units, parking is not required. The zoning resolution clearly defines transit zones, so we can, we can better understand how the city defines those two things. Um, but the other thing I really wanted to say was that I'm saying without talking to my co committee members that we had a very great positive discussion last month on the AMI chart that we proposed. And I just wanted to let people know that we are, I'm committing to continuing to work on it because I learned a lot through the discussion last week. Um, and so I will circle up with my co committee working group members to figure out next steps. But if anyone's interested, just feel free to reach out to me or to Bill.
Thank you very much, Daughtry. Okay, next, next is Bill Flannoy.
Yes. One of the things also that I was looking at too with the same thing about the parking requirements and Daughtry already brought it up is the cost of putting in a parking is very high. And it actually impedes them from having lower rents. So if it's like Daughtry said, if it's about including uh, subsidize subsidized rents are basically lower income rents. Okay, when you have parking included, it's harder to actually have lower rents. Okay, so if you're looking at situations like that, I think that's one of the reasons why Mr. Wrestler is actually mentioning that for that reason.
I I don't disagree with that, Bill, and we need to have.
John, not having a discussion.
I don't disagree with that, but we need to have the discussion then instead of trying to justify it now. I know his justification. We all read about it, but we have not contributed to. That's my point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, next I see Judy Stanton.
I'm going to put in a point for reducing the amount of cars in downtown Brooklyn. There's no needs to be, if you build lots, cars will come. People that would support what Lincoln's trying to do based on the environmental benefits of fewer cars. He'll come to the Transportation Committee and Land Use Committee and we can discuss it there.
Thank you. Uh, next I see Ms. Lee.
Yeah, I just want to say that not everybody who has a car has it as a luxury. Some people need their vehicle for work and they cannot do their jobs going in a subway because not everybody do the same type of work. And a car is one of the biggest taxed item in this city. You pay for gas, you pay for car, you pay for insurance, you pay to park it. And we, and people who own cars are totally disrespected. As if you don't, you need to fold your car up and bring it into your house and park it. Yes, we need places to park and I agree, we need to have the discussion with Mr. Wrestler.
Okay, thank you. Uh, see Esther Blom.
Um, I'm just confused because as you know, like you said, we've been studying the A A MI. And we all know that it's not in line with what people really make. And now we don't even see thirty percent A A MI anymore. It's up to forty, it's up to sixty, it's up to eighty, it's up to a hundred twenty. So what are you talking about that they can't do parking because then it would take away like affordable housing? They are not building affordable housing now. And what's so surprising is that the committee, you all formed a committee and you know this. So this has nothing. They use that to say, oh, we can't build parking, we're going to be built affordable housing. This affordable house, every time I hear somebody say affordable house, is a lie. And so they lying and that's all it is to it. They don't say, don't say that you can't build the parking because of how that is not true. That's all I'm saying.
And we need to. For Lincoln Wrestler.
We'll be contact, I'll be contacting, uh, Taya Mueller's shortly on that and put in a request for Lincoln Wrestler to come to a meeting. Thank you.
And my.
Any other business?
Mr. Gordon, I want, I have a quest for Taya. Taya, when you're putting all of those links in the chat while we are talking about them, I can't get to the link at that time. Is there any accumulation of those links that can be distributed to the committee so that we could follow up later on?
Oh, boy, I'm sorry, John. We we don't save the chat. The chat is completely off the record. But you know, you can call me anytime and I will, I will find it for you.
I don't know what I want, but but thank you for that. And Taya, I will have to acknowledge you doing a fabulous job by yourself. I'm just like amazed at how you are able to keep up with all that.
You guys, you guys adjourn first and then you can throw me a party.
No, I'm not, I'm done with it. I wanted everyone there. That's part of the meeting.
Thank you, John.
I agree. First time we agree. If there's no other, if there are no other other business.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I have a quick question and and you don't have to answer right now, but I am curious about the follow up about the Willoughby Square Park and the dog run and the abolitionist place and the underground railroad tunnels. Yeah, I I don't know that there's an update, but I would like to ask for one.
I haven't heard. I don't know what, Taya, have you heard anything new on that area?
Um, there's nothing new, so, gosh, that was how many, two months ago now? So they gave very specific, oh, sorry, you can't see. They give very specific reasons why, oh, Daughtry, you were there. They gave very specific reasons why the dog park was not possible at that location. Um, two positive developments. One uh, council member Hudson is actually sponsoring a city, a Brooklyn borough wide dog parks, dog park info session one oh one with the Parks Department next Tuesday that we are co sponsoring at seven P M. It's on our, it's on the district calendar. Um, that's because I think we, they just wanted to explain, they want people to understand the the technical and mechanical requirements for a dog park and how those also sometimes overlap with city zoning rules, right? Um, the other development is Leonard Leventon from the Parks from the, our Parks Committee is a public member. He has coordinated about twenty people that are joining together to create a Friends of University Place Dog Park Group, uh, which is exactly the right first step. You you should form a Friends of Group because the Parks Department needs to know that they have a reliable partner in maintenance. Um, University Place is actually kitty corner across the street from abolitionist place, so that could be a potentially interesting compromise. But nothing, not, Daughtry, no, um, we haven't gotten any follow up from E D C.
That's what I was asking about because just quickly, there is, there is, there's action on the site. I walk by there once a week. I'll be walking by there tomorrow. There's heavy machinery there. There's, so I'm just, I'm sensing that progress is how progress is moving ahead and I'm not clear about how we might resolve this. And again, it's a design challenge. There's an answer.
You know, one, one thing that was interesting is if you take a really deep dive into all the historic documents that the Friends of found, the it it's purely coincidence, but it's a happy coincidence. The abolitionist tunnels were directly underneath what is now planned to be the walkway that will go across the block. So, and there is no design planned for that space yet, so that is a potential opportunity for public design for intervention there, but it's not, it hasn't been planned yet.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Yeah.
All right, so not hearing any further other business? We wish to wrap that up tonight.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Everybody.
Have a good night.
Have a good.